...for us three years ago and we look forward to continuing that kind of engagement. Tonight, we won't be able to huddle around small tables for obvious reasons, but we are looking for your input. We're looking for your guidance as we move forward and we want to make sure that as we seek this community engagement, you help us learn how best to do this. We've been experimenting with a variety of different engagements on these two different plans for the last nine months. Tonight's meeting is not the beginning of community engagement. In many ways, tonight's meeting and the subsequent meeting that we are still scheduling is sort of the wrap-up of a very long process for community engagement. More than 7,300 surveys have been filled out by Houstonians. I'm sorry, more than 3,000 surveys filled out by Houstonians. More than 3,500 Houstonians engaged with us in community meetings and public meetings throughout the city. Over the last nine months, 48 focus groups were held and at the suggestion of some of our community partners, we launched the Fair Housing Ambassadors Program for the first time in our history, working with individuals in the community to make sure that we were using their voice to spread the message of the work that we do and gain the feedback from the people that they were interacting with. So as you can tell, we've been busy long before tonight and we are going to continue that experimenting, that flexibility, but also seeking multiple ways to get your engagement. I do want to recognize that there are concerns with us moving forward with this meeting. I got two emails directly. One email was specifically concerned withholding this meeting. The other email was very concerned with us canceling a different meeting. So as you can see, some tension pulling in different directions. The thing that I'll say to you is we understand that we are in unprecedented times and we are going to learn with you to figure out how best to do community engagement, to make sure the work does not slow down, to make sure the essential services are delivered, but also to make sure that we hear your voice as we move forward. We are committing to that and we are looking forward to learning with you as you pilot models in your organizations, if you're working with an organization, but also as you give us feedback on what we're doing right and what we can do better. To that end, we are already working to reschedule the meeting that was originally scheduled for the 31st. We're hoping to have that meeting scheduled sometime in the next two weeks. We're looking for waivers from HUD as we work with our primary funder to make sure that slowdowns on our part or slowdowns throughout the country does not slow down the funding we need here in the city. We're looking for alternative ways of communication. We've already received several suggestions for those and will continue to look for additional suggestions on ways we can get this message out differently. And in the coming week or so, look for additional documentation in multiple languages on these two plans. And we are also working to try to translate the entire documents and get them up on our website as quickly as possible. Finally, I'll say that community engagement for much of the last four years has been a continual process for us. We don't hold these meetings once and then disappear. We are elegant with the community on a regular basis, whether it's with a formal public hearing or informal meetings. Later in the year, we will be launching community engagement and public meetings around a comprehensive housing plan. And so this is one of many engagements that we will be doing, much of an ongoing engagement. And the two plans that we are looking at and talking about today are plans that can be amended. And so as engagement changes, as we get additional feedback from the community, we'll be working with you to make sure that these plans stay up-to-date, appropriately amended as possible. With that, I just want to say that the purpose of this meeting is to get community or continue to gather community input on our draft 2020 to 2024 consolidated plan. You'll be hearing more about what that means later and as well as the 2020 proposed budget and then the draft analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. That's a lot of bureaucratic language, but what it boils down to is we have very important resources from the federal government that can be deployed to ensure that we achieve our mission here at the city, which is ensuring that every Houstonian has a home they can afford in a community where they can thrive. That's our goal and we need you to help us achieve that goal. As it relates to the fair housing, the analysis of impediments around fair housing, we recognize that in the past, these dollars have not always been spent in a way that was fair, in a way that addressed communities throughout the city, especially communities that were often underserved or had fewer resources than other communities. And we are committed here at the city to changing that. We want your assistance with changing that and we hope that tonight's conversation moves us in a good direction on that. Because we are virtual, our format will be different tonight. In a moment, I'll be handing the mic over to Chris Robinson, who will be giving a short presentation and reviewing the highlights from the plan. During the presentation, please send any questions you might have about the plans through Facebook Live. After the presentation, there will be a public hearing by phone. If you would like to make a three-minute public comment, it could be less than three minutes, but no longer than three minutes, we will be asking you to call 832-394-8874. That number is 832-394-8874. With that, let me thank you again for joining us tonight. Please give us feedback as we move forward, not only on the plan, but on this virtual meeting. And with that, I will hand the mic over to Chris, who will take it from here. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. We are now going to go into the short presentation about the 2020 to 2024 consolidated plan and annual action plan and the draft 2020 analysis of fair housing, excuse me, analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. So the short presentation will cover past accomplishments, some of the summary data that we've collected, the public engagement findings and our five-year strategic goals, along with our annual action allocations and proposed budget. So the presentation is meant to provide some sort of context for the public hearing portion that will happen at the concluding of this presentation. Our vision here at HCDD is that we provide a home that everyone can afford in a community where they can thrive. We always provide affordable housing, infrastructure and neighborhood services along with some community engagement activities or development and supportive services to assist people. And we do that through at least four federal entitlement grants, which is CDVG, HOPE, HOPWA and ESG. And all of these things help to move our vision forward. So what are we doing here tonight? We are working, we're here to get input about our consolidated plan and annual action plan. This is a five-year strategic plan that helps us drive our goals. We have created metrics that will drive, that our funding will help to drive our goals throughout the next five years. So we've allocated... Your screen's on. Excuse me, we're having some difficulties here. All right, here we are. So the consolidated plan and the annual action plan again, it's our five-year strategic plan that will drive what we do over the next five years. We allocate our entitlement grants to our activities in the annual action plan for the program year 2020. And this plan just talks about improving housing, our public facilities and how we can assist families that are low and moderate income. Our 2020 analysis of impediments to fair housing, what we also call the AI, it reviews several barriers that impede fair housing and it also helps inform those strategies that we use here at HCDD and with other departments to affirmatively further fair housing. So what we've heard so far, and this is based on our data research and through our public engagement process that we've been going through since June of 2019, our population has increased. Our population is now about 2.3 million people. About 10% account for persons with disabilities and almost half of the labor force, or excuse me, almost half of the population makes up the labor force here in Houston. We have almost 850,000 households that are accounted for through census data and the median income has increased to $51,000. The median income is about $160,000 and median rent prices are almost $1,000. Our LMI, or low to moderate households, make up about 51% of our population and 39% of the population is experiencing housing conditions. This is anything that is structurally based, electrical, plumbing or mechanical defects in the home. And sometimes these homes can be substandard and they may be deficient and not suitable for rehabilitation. And then just additionally, 32% of households also experience lead risks. Throughout our data process, we've reviewed median home values from 2000 to 2016 and what we found is that the sale prices and rent prices are not keeping up with income. House prices have increased by almost, or yeah, over 100% and rent prices have increased by 69% and at the same time, income has only increased by 40%. Now, we also assessed housing cost burden. And what you'll see in this slide is cost burdened households versus severely cost burdened households. What does that mean? So cost burdened households are families that are spending between 30% to 50% of their income, their household income on rent, mortgage and utilities. And severely cost burdened households are spending 50% or more on their housing costs. At the low to moderate income levels, we see that at least 65% of those households are experiencing housing cost burdens and 14.3% are experiencing severe cost burdens with respect to housing. And across the board, we saw that every income level is actually experiencing problems, but the highest rate of problems is occurring at our extremely low income levels. Since July of 2019, we've engaged with the public. We've talked to many people, gone to many community meetings. We have done over three or received over 3,000 surveys. We've had at least 3,500 participate in our community meetings. We've hosted or attended at least 75 community meetings or public meetings and then we've also established our Fair Housing Ambassadors Program. And this was an attempt for us to reach populations that we couldn't reach at HCDD alone and we needed help getting into certain communities and we did that through this program. In the express survey, we talked to almost 800 people. And of those people, we found out that 20% did not even know what fair housing was. We found out that almost 13% experienced housing discrimination in the past five years and then almost 51% of people did not know how to report housing discrimination. In our community needs survey, we asked several questions and one of those questions dealt with housing challenges. Almost 55% of homes or households had trouble getting to and from home when it was raining. 38% of those people had trouble getting repairs and almost a third also had trouble finding a better place to live. Another concern for households was paying for home insurance. And I'll just say that the greatest challenges dealt with in this survey were all related to housing or weather conditions and flooding. Our community needs survey asked also about improvements that needed to be made in the neighborhood. And what we found in social services is that mental health services was one of the services that needed the most improvement. And for neighborhood services, we discovered that the greatest challenges were dealing with infrastructure, meaning street maintenance, sidewalk maintenance and flooding drainage. And then, of course, we're still concerned about health and safety code enforcement. Some of the barriers to affordable housing include our current market conditions, travel and transportation costs, our quality of housing, and the list really goes on, but we've included some here in this slide just to talk about how or to show what kinds of things are impeding people from affordable housing. Now, with respect to the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, we discovered or we at least amended the list of impediments. Previously, we had a longer list, but we consolidated some of these. And we ended up on a list of 12 impediments, some that include discrimination in housing, segregation of housing patterns, a lack of financial education, we're still experiencing NIMBYism resistance and a lack of transportation options. And what are we doing to combat those impediments? We have written down 30 action items to address impediments, the impediments of fair housing that we listed in our plan. And some of those actions include educating people about fair housing, preserving and constructing affordable homes and completing the regional study, a comprehensive regional study about housing. For our consolidated plan, we have also, we've taken a look at the past and what we found is that we've reached over 5,000 people in fair housing calls. We've launched three fair housing campaigns. It touched almost 2 million people. We've funded rehab, we've repaired homes. We have provided almost 200 low and moderate income families with down payment assistance as well. In addition to that, we've supported the creation of the Houston Community Land Trust and the expansion of the Houston Land Bank. And about 26 new or improved communities were funded, new community facilities were funded. And I mean, our strategic goals will carry on into the next five years. So these goals, these numeric metrics will change, but the overall strategies will remain the same in that we want to preserve and expand the supply of affordable housing. And this, the list of our strategic goals is based on our research that we've done over the past nine months. We've talked to so many residents and found that these strategic goals will help drive our funding over the next five years. Our grant allocations have stayed steady since 2016. So based on the HUD February 14 posting of grant allocations, these are the amounts that we are expected to receive for the almost $50 million in the program year 2020. Our total allocation amount is $47,203,607. Our CDVG funding will amount to $24,000, I'm sorry, $24 million. Our HOPE about $10 million, our HOPWA about $10.3 million and ESG $2.1. For our public services, we've allocated $3.7 million, the ESG match, about $500,000 combined. This is about $4.5 million for public services and ESG. We've also allocated $4.6 million for public facilities and $7.6 million for home repairs and remediation activities. And our economic development activities anticipates using $250,000 to fund prior year activities that will continue through program year 2020. And our code enforcement will also fund activities totaling approximately $2.9 million. Some of our anticipated accomplishments include providing public services to almost 18,000 households, improving two public facilities, 32,000 code enforcement visits and some lead hazard abatement homes of about 50 homes, constructing 75 affordable rental homes and repairing about 250 homes. For our 2020 grant allocation of home, we have anticipated spending about $4.5 billion for multifamily rehabilitations and developments. We've also budgeted for $1.7 million for single family development, $3 million for tenant-based rental assistance and $1 million for planning and administration. Our anticipated accomplishments for 2020 using the home funds will include multifamily development, our HomeTebra or the tenant-based rental assistance and single family home development as well. The 2020 grant allocation for HOPWA includes budgeting $2.2 million for operating costs, $2.1 million for supportive services, $2.4 million for tenant-based rental assistance, $2.4 million for short-term rental mortgage and utility subsidies and $100,000 for resource identification and $1 million for administration. Our anticipated accomplishments for 2020 using HOPWA funds includes assisting about 1,700 households with HOPWA funding and this includes the tenant-based, the short-term rental mortgage utility and utility subsidies and any permanent or transitional facilities serving households. Our 2020 grant allocation for ESG includes $84 million for the homeless management information system, approximately $757,000 for supportive services, about $536,000 for homeless prevention and about $568,000 for rapid rehousing, which assists persons who have recently become homeless with finding a new home, and about $100,000 for administration. Our anticipated goals for ESG include assisting persons with homelessness prevention, about 85 households with rapid rehousing services and another 1,000 persons with emergency shelters. Our draft 2020 and 2024 consolidated plan and annual action plan are updated, are posted online and are available for comment now through April 16, 2020. The following plans, the plans are actually located online and copies can be obtained at our office location at 2100 Travis on the ninth floor. And comments are, they can be emailed to hcddplanning@houstontx.gov or they can be mailed to HCDD at the attention of Planning and Grants Management at the office at 2100 Travis on the ninth floor, Houston, Texas, 77002. Now we're opening up our lines to take calls. The call-in number is 832-394-8874 or you can ask questions through Facebook Live. Now we'll be transitioning into our public hearing and thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name's Derek Sellers. I am an assistant director here in the House Community Development Department at the City of Houston. We're moving into the public hearing portion of the evening at this moment. We're inviting you to please call in. As Chris mentioned, the number is 832-394-8874. We want your comments. We want to hear your feedback on the information that was presented by Chris a few minutes ago on our draft documents that are on our website or on how we're doing implementing our programs, our projects and how we spend these federal funds. So please call in. Each speaker is going to be given three minutes to provide their testimony and when you call in and we have you on the line, we'll ask that you provide your name first, state it first, and then we'll give you three minutes. All calls will be heard in the order they were received and you're not allowed to yield time to another person. Each person's given their own opportunity to provide their three-minute comments. This testimony is recorded and transcribed and we will be including your comments as part of this document. And then after that, we'll also be providing our responses to your comments. We mentioned a few minutes ago where those documents can be seen. So we welcome you to please visit our website and view that. In addition to that, we're going to be taking questions through Facebook Live and so we'll kind of weave some of these together as we have them available. And right now, we have one up from Alan. His question is, "The ESG allocation seems really low relative to the other three categories." And that is true. It is a lower amount for, ESG stands for Emergency Solutions Grants. It's the grant we receive from HUD to help with homelessness issues, prevention, rapid rehousing, operations of homeless shelters and such. But however, if you look at the allocation amounts relative to the last few years, it's been about steady slightly increase. It's in line with what we've received in previous years. If this is something that you think is important, especially at the time we're in dealing with the COVID issue, speak to your congressional representatives and see what we can do about getting more funding to assist there. It looks like we have another question. We'll be there in just a minute. So the question we have up is, "Who can help with my Harvey app?" We have a help program, Houston Homeowner Assistance Program. We have the, if you call into our main line, it can be found on our website, we'll direct you to the right person to make sure that you're getting the responses that you need to give you the updates on your Harvey app, let you know where you're at in the queue and if there's anything outstanding that we need to get from you to assist. So the next question's coming up. It says, "Will your offices still be open to pick up documents due to the pandemic?" So as the director mentioned, we are open for business, but we are also, it's by Adam, we're trying to mitigate our exposure, our interaction with the public and back and forth. What we can do is you give us a call and we'll look at, see what we can do to best facilitate passing along those documents. We're doing the best we can to provide documents by email if possible, including taking pictures and texting if that's something that you can do. But if all else fails, we'll work with you to see what are our best methods to get those documents from you so that we can keep this process moving forward. It looks like we also have a comment. So caller, if you'll just state your name and then you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Great. My name is Warwick Cephalo-Perez. I am the executive director for the Houston Housing Collaborative and a longtime National Housing Justice Advocate. Since 2015, the Houston Housing Collaborative has united the voices of over 120 unique organizations and individuals, including housing practitioners, nonprofits, builders, developers... and individuals, including housing practitioners, not-for-profit builders, developers, neighborhood associations, advocacy groups, and community residents. And we all, people care, just like HTDD does, about equitable, resilient, and affordable housing for all of Houston. We are thankful for the ongoing community engagement and processes that have changed progress with the time, effort, and energy by the entire HTDD team. Your work is appreciated, in particular during times of heightened pricing like today. We ask HTDD to have these draft plans include in the creation of a resilient housing system that provides equitable, resilient, and affordable housing for all of Houston residents. Everyone deserves affordable and resilient housing, which provides access to economic opportunities and a high quality of life. Housing serves as a cornerstone of access to economic opportunity, transportation, quality of education, healthcare, and many other systems responsible for the high quality of life. Housing instability results from issues such as high costs, displacement, or natural disasters, or as we're facing now, a health crisis. These challenges are particularly acute for populations that are already vulnerable, such as people of color, immigrants, people here, and domestic violence survivors, and our very low-income residents. Rated with this consolidated plan that you have presented, we are excited to hear that the City of Houston is looking to create and implement a comprehensive housing plan that uses a systems approach to address Houston's housing challenges. We hope that this plan would articulate strategies, goals, and priorities for reselling affordable housing and provide a concrete roadmap for the next 20 years. Having such a roadmap would ensure that local government has strategies not only for existing challenges, but consistent approach to new issues and opportunities that arise through national policies and initiatives. We urge you to prioritize the creation of that comprehensive housing plan that will work in conjunction with the plans that you presented tonight. We ask HTDD to create a committee or task force made up of key diverse stakeholders that would provide thinking, reaction, and support of that development of the critical need of a comprehensive housing plan. This committee or task force is your additional arm to community engagement, which is the basis for equitable policy and program development, especially on issues that complicate and place-based housing. Local government should coactively engage with diverse stakeholders on this committee and through the committee to learn from the expertise, whether it's the resident's lived experience, a not-for-profit developer's struggle with financing, or an advocacy organization's analysis of resilience issue. This engagement is necessary for both citywide policies and neighborhood projects. The complete community's admission has demonstrated that each community has its own views on housing challenges and appropriate local roles and solutions. So, we look forward to working with HTDD as you guys create that comprehensive housing plan that would be graded with this draft plan that you presented tonight, along with the creation of that committee or task force or advisory group that would work with you all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. It appears we have another question that has come through from Facebook Live. It says, "What type of emergency aid is being offered to the multifamily sector and residents during this current crisis?" We are actively working with our, with our partners to determine their needs around this, looking at our available funds to see where we can make shifts to make funding available. And so, we, we hope as we have those continuing conversations, and as we look at what the federal government is choosing to do in their aid package, that we'll be rolling out additional funding and programs to assist as we move through this crisis. So, do we have anybody else that wants to offer a public comment, or if you'd like to present your question through Facebook Live? Give it just a couple more minutes real quick. It looks like we may have an incoming call. Give it just a second and we'll get that transferred in. So, as the director was presenting earlier in the night, we are looking at doing this again, potentially in about two weeks. As that information becomes available, we will be passing it along. We'll be posting it on our website, on our social media, and sharing it through all the avenues that we have available to us to get engagement and make sure that you'll have further opportunities to comment on the draft documents. So, commenter, will you please state your name, and then you'll have three minutes to provide your, your comment.
Hi, this is Mary Lawler. I'm Executive Director of Avenue, City of Houston Preparation, and I want to thank the department and all the staff for holding this hearing in this difficult time. Appreciate the information that was presented today. I want to echo the comments of Lawrence Pacheco Perez from the Houston Housing Collaborative about the need for a comprehensive housing plan for the City of Houston. I'm struck by the presentation, by the fairly low number of units, housing units that can be produced with these very limited federal funds that Houston has available, and with a comprehensive housing plan, the city could really take an overall look at all of the resources that are available and set goals for the different types of housing that can be produced to meet the needs of the different populations in what the city needs housing in Houston. So, again, thank you for all the work that lent me to this hearing and the presentation and Avenue and others in the Houston Housing Collaborative, look forward to working collaboratively with the city on how to production a comprehensive housing plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, so we'll do one last call for comments, and then for questions, and hearing none, we'll get this wrapped up. All right, so as we look to close out the evening, first, we want to thank you for viewing the presentation on Facebook Live through HTV on the call-in line that we have available here. We would like to hear your feedback after this, even through Facebook Live, to let us know what worked, what didn't work, what we can do better, as we look to do this again in a couple of weeks, but also as we look at future opportunities to provide something similar. Your feedback is important to us. It's good critique to help make this better. A copy of this presentation will be posted on our website very soon for viewing and for you to be able to share with others that maybe couldn't make it tonight. And once again, we'll be looking to do this again in a couple of weeks. Please visit our website at houston tx.gov/housing to find out more information about our department, our programs, our projects, and to view these documents to get the latest, greatest news on what's going on. And with all that being said, we want you to have a great evening, and thank you for attending, and we'll see you soon. Thanks.